All right, we are on.
All right, I would hereby like to call this Orange Township Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, April 1st to order. Can we please have a roll?
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Avadunola.
Yes, here.
And Ms. Sundar is here.
Here. All right, so I believe this meeting is to discuss the zoning code amendment that we have been reviewing over the past couple of meetings. So, Robin, if you would like to proceed and lead the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. So, we will pick up where we left off. So, if you'll recall, we last covered Article 10, which is the planned unit district. So, bear with us, the article numbering moving forward is going to be a little funky because we are dropping a certain number of zoning districts. Some of these were articles that were reserved already. So, you'll see the numbers of articles kind of skip around a little bit. That's partially to preserve references in older existing planned districts that some of them refer to certain article numbers in the zoning resolution, so we wanted to keep those consistent. So, we were going from Article 10. Article 11 is just reserved, and then the next actual article is Article 12, which is the commercial corridor. So, if you were curious about the weird numbering, that's all. So, Article 12, the commercial corridor. Again, for a lot of these, we've covered the uses already in the use table, so we're really going to be focusing on the development standards that we have here. As a reminder, for these commercial districts that we're going to discuss, some of the development standards are actually in the article, the pages of the article itself, and then more development standards like lighting, landscaping, parking, all those are in Article 21, which we'll get to later in the generally applicable article. So, some of these are unique to the zoning districts, some will be in Article 21. So, again, that's why the standards are a little divided, but hopefully it makes sense in the end. So, the commercial corridor, the CC zone, which is Article 12, is basically designed as our primary commercial district. Again, this is a straight zoning district, so the idea would be that people could rezone to the commercial corridor district. This would be generally allowable for commercial, retail, auto-oriented uses, restaurants, fuel stations, things like that. It's fairly flexible in terms of the uses. Karthik, do you have a?
Yeah, quick question. The setback, the rear setback.
Yeah.
Of 30.
Yeah.
Typically, in a commercial, yes, the fixed structure to the ground is 30-foot, but often you find fixed dumpsters behind the, behind any commercial entities, restaurant or even if it is a restaurant, or even a light assembly space also typically has a dumpster behind it. So, is that considered within the setback?
So, generally, dumpster enclosures, things like that, those are allowed in the building setback. It would depend. I think one thing that we'll look at, and you can see the note there, is so there's a different setback when it's against a commercial property versus when it's against a residential property. So, when it's against a residential property, it would increase. Generally speaking, a dumpster enclosure is, you know, it's a dumpster, it's a trash enclosure, and then it has a fence around it. And generally speaking, we don't consider fences structured. So, generally speaking, those are allowed within the setback.
Maybe, maybe not with a fence, or sometimes it might just be like a wall, but it doesn't have a roof, so it's not really a structure.
Yeah, and...
Or a building. I'll rephrase that. It's a structure, but not a building.
Yeah. You know, I think it could be something...
But often it is permanent, almost.
Well, yeah, usually three sides of it are permanent.
Yeah. And, you know, just thinking through this, it may make sense to add some kind of line where if it's, if the setback is against another commercial property, then it may be fine to have a dumpster there. But if it's against residential, if it has that 100-foot setback, you don't want that five feet off the property line next to somebody's house.
Exactly.
So, it may make sense to add a line to not allow trash enclosures.
Well, it used to be that that setback was for use, not for a building or structure, but for use. So, a use would be the dumpster, or it could be another, a different use, but you couldn't have like a generator back there either, abutting the property line, because that was part of, that was considered a use.
Yeah, and that's interesting. I'll have to look at our current language, because I do think you're correct, Christine, that our current language says no non-residential use or building within 100 feet, so we can look at that language.
My thought is, though, but we're increasing it, though, right, from 50 to 100?
So, the, and I should clarify, so the, in this draft, it says 50 feet. In our current zoning code, which is adopted today, it's 100 feet. So, that, that's something I, you know, the feedback that I've gotten so far is that it should probably stay at 100 feet.
I agree that it should probably stay at 100.
Against residential, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that it should be a use, not a building.
I thought those were always property lines anyway, with respect to the 100 feet. I don't think those were ever been. They were judging us to be a structure, or wouldn't that always property lines, or was I wrong?
It was in the general, right?
Yeah, it's in the general.
Yeah, so it applied to all the districts unless they requested a divergence.
But I mean, it was property lines and not something that was arbitrary, like, hey, what's...
Right, yeah, it would be, the setback is from the property line.
Yeah, property lines, so whether it's a dumpster or whatever's back there, does it make if it's on the property?
Yes. Good point. If it is a property line, then is 50 okay, I think?
Well, I might reduce it to... Well, I'm not sure what we're, because the setback was always from the property line.
Definitely, exactly. That's why, I'm not even sure why this discussion was even occurring.
It's...
I was confused, because it's like, all right, hey, we're still talking property lines.
Yeah.
So, if the dumpster's within the property line of the business, what difference does it make if it's wherever it is with respect to the property, if the property line 100 feet was met? What difference does where it...
The discussion was brought up because we did propose it to be less.
To be 50 feet. Okay, well, that, but that's still property lines.
Yeah.
We're still talking about the same issue, and so if it's on its property, I don't care where it is, if you've gotten the property lines, and the distances are still the same. That's an impossible argument to make if you're within the property, if you're in your property line. I don't think I want to make that less. I think I liked 100 feet where that's, where that's been.
For any type of use or just residential?
For residential.
Okay. Okay, so then we need a conversation of for other, like, commercial or industrial or even like mixed use, or what kind of setback? Well, actually, the setback that's proposed is what's in front of you here, right? For non-residential uses.
I can see, I can see potentially, depending on the business, there could be a divergence to allow something less than that 100 feet, depending on what that business is.
Right.
If that business is an office and so on, obtrusive to this residential, I can see that, that as a potential.
Or potentially for if it's green space.
Well, green space, we had one of those the last time, and that's green space, and so that's, that doesn't really count, because you're not to that residential structures. You know, that's the argument I would make, you know? So, we're still in occurrence with the intention of the code was to limit these businesses from residential properties, was the structure.
So, there would be a buffer?
Yeah, and if they have the green space there, so what? I don't care if we, we don't have to have 100 feet from the green space.
Yeah, I mean, I think the difficulty there is we just, we have to write the language so that it's from any residentially zoned district.
Exactly.
We can't really, we can't, it's very difficult for us to turn, you know, we kind of have to look at the zoning of the property. We can't really, you know, maybe there's an old house there that nobody's living in, or, you know, like in the case of the schools, it's FR1, it is technically residential, but that's one you can't ask for divergences or variances.
So, would a mixed-use district be residential?
That is a good question. So, I know the mixed-use zone has that restriction that it's, let me look at the text. And we are, we're jumping around a little bit, but...
Sorry.
I can see that being arguable.
Yeah, it's good to...
Yeah.
On both sides.
You'd have one of those mixed use.
Yeah, on both sides.
And then you don't have to.
Michelle, just a quick question. So, I know like the new proposal, right? What is the goal? I'm trying to just give me a...
The goal?
Yeah, what is the goal? Where do you want...
I think the goal is to have a larger setback. It's for, you know, the, not in my backyard kind of folks, the people that would come out here and be concerned with a commercial project, having that bigger setback option in the zoning code.
So, they don't have like a drive-through in their backyard, basically?
Yeah, I hate to say that, but that's kind of the reality of it, to give that larger buffer from a use.
Makes sense, thank you.
And they'll still sit in their backyard, they still...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, well, we'll try.
Take the larger buffer.
So...
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that the setback, the definition of setback is the property structure to the property line, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
The beginning or the edge of it.
Except that way, this time we had talked about it being not the setback for use, not for a structure, but for use. So, that way, you couldn't put like a drive-through kiosk right on the property line.
Anything grounded.
You couldn't put a, your dumpster right on the property line. You couldn't put, you know, your transformer right on the property line, that if it's use, you would still have to put that beyond that 100 feet. So, you couldn't have like someone taking the parking lot and putting it right up against a residential neighborhood.
Agreed, and that is exactly what I'm asking, because it's not property line to property line. It is the structure to the property line.
Yeah, and in this case, that's why I suggested maybe it should be use.
Use, yeah.
And then, you know, if it's not, it's something that they could always try to get.
So, what if, just hypothetical, there's a commercial building and they want to build like a little park for their, you know, is that art, like, technically that is a use? Would that be wanting to be 100 feet back to?
Park?
I don't know, just like, like, I live in players, they have a park for the corporate offices there, you know, would that be 100 feet?
Or like...
Back.
Well, it depends, because what happens if it's like a dog park?
Yeah. I just, I just don't know how, you see, it's challenging.
It's, I would say that would be something that they could ask for, you know, a divergence for, something like that.
Yeah, I just find it, as I'm thinking through that, when you even talk about the use, so we changed it from 50 to 100, and the reason we changed it was because of...
It was already at 100.
It was already at 100.
It's been 100.
Been 100. We proposed in this version 50.
So, and can I...
So, you thought it should be 50, so you were reducing, because as I'm processing just from a owner's perspective of buying a property to utilize it, seems like 50-foot ought to be reasonable.
But I think we talked about what was behind the, as that cut butt up to a residential.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I mean, I agree.
You would think 50 feet would be reasonable, but look at how many communities we have had come here complaining about businesses, you know, right on the property line, even though they have 100 feet buffer.
Yeah, but they don't complain neither.
You would not want a fast food, you would not want a fast food restaurant 50 feet from your house. You would not want that, and nor, and or car wash, and nor do I want to see that in Orange Township. I do not want to give up on 100 feet at all. I could get see a divergence if it was a business that was unobtrusive. I could hear about that, but no, otherwise, then we just stay at 100.
What do other townships have? Do they, what other cities have? Was it, is that the reason you all suggested 50 foot, because you see that elsewhere? Or what was the thought?
Honestly, that was one that was suggested by our consultant. I'm not, honestly, not sure where they got that number from. So, if I can just read the current, the text in our current code, "Non-residential buildings or uses except parking shall not be located nor conducted closer to 100 feet to any lot line of a residential district." So, parking is an exception.
Is allowed. So, are we, or do, have we ever talked about parking setbacks?
So, our base zoning code does not have parking setbacks. There are certain planned commercial districts that do establish parking setbacks. Our zoning, I guess, our zoning code does say that it shouldn't be closer to six feet from the property line. So, that's not much of a setback.
So, basically, we have six feet?
Yes.
And I don't think you want to make it so restrictive, though, that businesses ultimately don't come here. And so, I think it needs to be reasonable.
It's been 100 feet standing in place for decades.
I hear you, but our consultant, a consultant we hired, paid for, has come with a different recommendation. I'm processing their recommendation.
Okay.
As a, as a business owner, you know, granted, I get it that you may not want certain things close to your home, but it's like people saying, oh, I bought this property because they told me they're never going to develop what's next to me. Well, that's wolf tickets. They're going to develop it one day.
Or as a realtor.
You know, so it's going to, right, it's going to get developed into something someday. I'm just trying to think through...
Well, think about what the 50 feet does. I mean, and what communities those are involved in, and we get to choose what we want Orange Township to be.
So...
You know, notwithstanding if somebody else comes in and says, oh, I really want something more dense, I really like denser properties, and we say, that's all, that's one of our decisions here to think about, I don't really want to see it that dense.
So, how about it's like maybe, I'm looking at a compromise here. Maybe, maybe 100, no, I was going to say 100 feet for single-family residential and 50 feet for multi-family residential. Because right now, we're using residential as the broad spectrum of both single and multi-family, correct?
Correct.
All right, because if I'm a single-family person and I'm on my little, you know, house farm, I don't want a commercial property 50 feet from my backyard or my side yard along, you know, Old State or something like that. But if I live in an apartment complex, where we're already sort of close and we already have lots of parking lot, I'm thinking 50 feet buffer, not that big of a deal.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Dennis, does that...
I know, I agree, but as long as, or, or, you can, you can make that as long as you could spell it out where it makes sense. Otherwise, heck, you'll make that, somebody come in and ask for a divergence, and then that way, the board gets a chance to decide and see it, rather than something, oh, your coach said 50 feet, and then we have to argue with them if it's not exactly right. I think leave it at 100 and allow for those divergences for something that's different. I agree with you. I think if it's a multi-family, that can be different, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it ought to be written, though. Man, I understand the piece of the, because when people read the, the code, that may be a deterrent to some folks, when it, you know, yes, they can come in and ask for divergence and so forth, but it may be an instant.
Here's, here's where that gets eliminated a little bit, because, because we've adhered to it, how many arguments I've already heard here, we've discussed it before, about what is already in the plan. Here's what's in the plan. The plan says these, these, this is going to be commercial. The plan says this is, is mixed-use. The plan says this is residential, and so that is what already avoids those kinds of issues, because those kind of things aren't going to get put together.
I just want to clarify, this is a, the commercial corridor is a straight district, so there would not be divergences for a straight district. So, if they weren't able to comply with the standards that whatever we decide, we would probably have to direct them to the planned district route.
Okay.
So, like, I've seen in appeals, like, I've seen like a lot of cases. So, there was a small church off of Lewis Center Road across Evans Farm, if you remember the property mission, what I'm talking about. So, that was a small church, old church, and then they, they had a small, like, daycare, and they wanted to extend, they came, they came to appeals for the parking variance. So, that's where it gets complicated when you, you know, it's, it's a mixed use, right? It's not residential, it's not commercial. Could you see the point? So, I think we really have to have some kind of like clarification on the setback, because they came and then they, they want to extend the small daycare into a bigger one.
Yeah.
So, they are still like coming under a small business. You see my point? So, and I've seen like the growing...
Yeah, and they can apply for a variance.
What if you had a Methodist church, Lewis Center?
Lewis Center Village, yeah.
Across Evans Farm, off of Lewis Center.
Yeah, I was trying to think the housing that was...
Yeah, if you could remember the barber shop, the old barber, cute little barber shop, yeah, it's, it's right next to that, so. So, what I'm trying to say, right, you cannot control the growth, like, there is, like, you know, some church, I'm not talking about just one church, I'm saying like I saw many in appeals. So, there were several cases which came for variance, and we keep approving them on certain conditions. So, how do you control that, right?
Yeah.
So, and there is residential next to this place.
Yeah.
I can talk about the other one, East Orange Road, across a post office, there is, it's an old home, and it was converted into a church. And then like it was behind the Ekon Home Builders, like, you know, so you cannot control after they do some modifications for that. I think it's better to keep the 100 feet.
Yeah.
I mean, like, if you're trying to do something in the residential area, I think the residential becomes the more important thing. I mean, like, that's how I see it, you know? You can always choose buying a commercial wherever it fits your needs.
Yeah, I like that, the compromise story.
100 for single-family, 50 for multi-family.
Just because I wouldn't have a problem with like, you know, a business 50 feet from a multi-family, especially if it might be, caters to the multi-family.
Yeah.
And most of them do if they build them that way.
So, would we apply that to, because this little footnote's in a lot of, in all bars, straight districts, would we apply that for like the industrial or is that a different conversation, or are we trying to stay consistent with how we handle setbacks for single-family and multi-family, I guess?
The commercial corridor would encompass all of them, right? Right, industrial?
Well, I mean, so the, we have this footnote in each one of the straight districts, sorry, it's kind of hard to see.
Yeah.
Do we want to be consistent with how we handle setbacks from single-family and multi-family in all of the districts?
I would say, yeah.
I would say, yeah.
I mean, I would, I would say yes, too, but I just...
Because I'm, you know, or if it's industrial, maybe it's even more. I mean, I don't know. Right now, our industrial stuff is by the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
But depending upon what the industrial use is, do you really want it next to a single-family residential neighborhood?
I don't think we've done the industrial zone yet, right?
Sorry, I'll just...
No, that's me, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we're keeping it consistent or not. So, I guess when I, once we get to the industrial, we can have that conversation.
Okay, because that's why I was thinking that, you know, I have no problems with the commercial or, you know, the question would be is what would be the setback between multi-family and single-family?
Yeah.
But they're both residential districts, so.
Hi, Mark Freeman, 478 Glen Side Lane. If I'm living in an apartment, am I going to be any happier about having a drive-through speaker 50 or 55 feet away from my bedroom window than if I had a single-family home? I mean, I'm not, I mean, I get what you're trying to accomplish with, with, with the compromise, but I don't know that that's necessarily fair to those residents.
Well, it's 50 feet from your property line, not from your bedroom window.
Okay, so that's, that's...
So, your property line would, would include presumably all the garages and parking that generally surrounds a multi-family complex, or pool, or whatever, because, so, so it would be from the property line 50 feet. And the fact that you're in multi-family, I would say you're probably used to more noise because...
Right next door.
Because you have to deal with your neighbors and garbage trucks or whatever, and everything else that comes with a multi-family. So, you know, if the consultant recommended 50 feet, I could see 50 feet for a multi-family, but not for, you know, somebody who has, you know, a single family on, you know, half an acre or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, because there's a friend I visited a lot who had an apartment up in the Graceland area. The back of the apartment building faced High Street, but in between the apartment building and High Street was a Wendy's, right across from Graceland, if you've been over there. The distance from the back of that building to the property line, eyeballing it, I'd say would be about three car lengths.
It's Columbus.
I get it.
And that's what we're trying to avoid.
I hear you.
Yeah.
I agree completely. But the, the drive-through speaker was maybe, maybe two car lengths from that property line. So, you got about five car lengths from somebody's window to a drive-through speaker. That sucks. I don't think we want to do that here. Well, you know...
Yeah, I, so ironically, I, I lived there, and they did make a sign like a noise acceptance form, and they did it in my current place now. It's not great, but it's kind of just the reality of the situation with like downtown housing. I mean, there's so many different noises that you experience, and...
Well, sure.
But I think that's just kind of part of the...
But that's not why people come up here.
The territory. Well, we do have 23 Corridor, I mean, that's a pretty loud, busy street. I, I hear you, I mean, I didn't love it, but I think it's just kind of part of what you get yourself into, so. Yeah, I lived in that Graceland area.
But I do hear what you're saying, because if it's, up here, the apartments are a little bit more pricier, I think, than they are other places.
Lot farther away as well.
Right, and so when you do pay premium price for an apartment living and...
Yeah, I mean, the building I'm talking about, people are paying, you know, less than $1,000 a month for a one-bedroom.
Yeah.
Here, you look, you'd be able to park a car for $1,000 a month.
Yeah, it's different.
The other thing that I can throw into this discussion as well, and this is in the general development standard, so we won't be getting to this for a minute, but in the draft code, we do have buffer requirements that are included in that, you know, whenever one zone abuts another type of zone, which requires some kind of buffer of shrubbery and trees, and that, that's a little different than our current code, that where it's just the, kind of the distance, this does require an actual physical barrier of some sort.
Yeah, that'd help with some of the sound challenges and concerns.
Yeah, and then if you have six feet from the property line for your parking lot, that gives you 12-foot of potential buffer.
So, I'm, I'm supporting the compromise story, and I think it could be applied across the, across the board.
Just thinking through, 50 feet is basically two and a half car lengths.
Yeah.
Yeah, standard car parking, 20 feet, I guess 18 for some, but 20.
Let's keep it high. Let's keep it hundred, I would suggest.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I, I, I do think that, uh, the consistency is good, uh, in just keeping it consistent from multifamily and single family, kind of eliminate some of that gray area, although I, I certainly do understand the argument for, you know, different types of housing. I, and I think we could craft our way in the language around this, but we do have certain, uh, like, the, we have certain neighborhoods that are zoned multifamily right now, that are basically the Epcon attached product, uh, that are senior empty, empty nesty, empty nester housing, uh, and I am quite sure that they would prefer the hundred-foot setback.
Yeah. About the other, what, a couple months ago?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, it, it would depend on the development in question, it's just hard to capture everything.
Yeah, let's keep it consistent, hundred, yeah.
Okay, so we are keeping it a hundred now?
I know what to do with a hundred, but, you know, if, if the majority says stick with a hundred.
And I, I, I can do a little bit more research and, and see what other.
And, and I'm curious if we could find out from the, uh, consultant, why was that a recommendation? Uh, I mean, I, I would imagine, based on their experience and what they've seen, um, around the nation, and perhaps even here in Ohio, that there, there was a move to this fifty-foot story.
Yeah, and I, I think frankly, part of the reason that, uh, we've kind of moved to finish this code mostly in-house, with in-house staff efforts, is, uh, ZoneCo is a great firm, uh, but we ultimately felt, we felt that we know our community best, uh, those of us who live here, serve here, uh, work here, uh, and to, to carry that to the finish line. So, I do appreciate their recommendations, but I, I would think that.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm sure you can check with the consultant, but if it's coming down to the township comparison to the other one.
Yeah.
See, Orange Township is fast-growing, because of the schools and stuff, so, i- if we are going to, like, compare with other township, like, I think we should really bring all the factors together to make a decision.
I think this is a good example, and, so this is the, um, this is Little Bear, and what are those apartments called?
Oh, across this street from it?
Oh, Oak Creek.
Are these Oak Creek, yeah, so that is, I mean, this is very rough, but that's, says it's thirty-six from the property line, so, probably forty, fifty, maybe. So, but then, you know, the helm has a setback, right? So, like, the distance from the home to the, to this, that's, that's the hundred, so.
That's an apartment, right?
Oak Creek.
Yeah. So, just, just a visual to see.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
You know, i- it's happened in the township, but.
But that was considered residential, butting residential, is that correct?
Correct.
Because that was multifamily.
Yeah.
Oh, so that, that a hundred-foot setback wouldn't apply?
Yeah, so it wouldn't apply.
Car wash, or nothing like that, Chick-fil-A.
Exactly, so the, the hundred footer, the fifty-foot would apply to.
I don't know why I thought multifamily applied.
I'm trying to think where there would be commercial that.
Yeah, I can find something.
I think a good example is what our zoning and regional planning didn't like, which was legal in every sense, were those big apartment buildings out there, Home Road and High Street, the four-story apartment buildings. Did those, were those legal? Yes, they were, foot-wise, dimension-wise, everything, except you had three, three or four large buildings. We had a room full of people, 'cause these were those Epcon condos, this, this called, if you'll call it senior living, that's fine, now we know what we're talking about.
And, but still, those were probably a hundred foot.
Well, they were more than a hundred feet, yeah, they were a hundred feet, exactly, they met all that, but regional planning didn't like it, didn't think they should be there, our own zoning didn't think they should be there, and I agreed they shouldn't be there. Unfortunately, those were turned down. Were they legal? Yes. Did they meet the code? Yes.
Yeah, so this is, this is Home Depot, um.
This is what?
Home Depot, and they do a pl- they do, um, this is a hundred feet here, so, from this person's property line. I mean, it's a weird shaped lot, but.
He lives. He lives on Glen Side.
I think where you'll find it is.
What's that distance right there?
That's ninety, but I, I bet, if you zoomed in, it would, it probably complied with the hundred foot at that point. But to the building, now, the pavement is a different story, so.
We forced them to build mounds and all kinds of.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Buffering, so, I remember when that Home Depot was, was built versus High Meadows, yeah.
With the buffering and that sort of thing, it's presentable, it looks good, it's gonna help to manage some of the noise and that sort of thing, so I, I.
I think where you'll find it is Boyd's Tire Service, on, on East Powell Road.
Okay, bear with me.
There's a Boyd's Polaris Tire Service right next to it.
Oh, yeah, that's on Orange though, right?
It is.
East Powell?
Yeah, that's a hundred, yeah, so it's, Michelle, it's pretty close to where you were, so just, uh, East Powell's, where Oak Creek dead ends into it.
Oh.
Like, next to the car wash.
Yeah.
Behind the speedway floor.
So, it's, it's kind of around the curve from there.
South of Meyer?
No, um, oh, what else is, so it's, is that Police Sky, next to Police Sky Car Wash?
Oh, near.
Oh, so we're talking like, Oak Creek Center, like, west, where Toronto's.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I, I live right there, I know. And, and the house there, they hear a lot of noise from the cars, because my, my friends live there.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, actually, that's a good example, okay. So, yeah, so here's. Like, where Toronto's is, yeah, that is a hundred from the building about.
Yeah, so just north of there, Michelle, I think it's where.
Just all north of there, there's the.
That building, but yeah.
That's the Firestone, or Goodyear, or whatever it is.
That's Boyd, that's the tire service.
It's really hard to do this under pressure.
I'm impressed.
I am, too.
Take your time.
Yeah, so that, that's a hundred foot.
Yeah, ninety, yeah.
Yeah, so.
And even with that, you, you hear a lot.
Yeah, so whether it's fifty or a hundred, you still don't hear a lot.
If it is fifty, it would be even more noisy.
I don't know about that, sound, sound travels with.
Exactly.
You, 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 you wouldn't wanna cut that distance in half.
Exactly, exactly, so that's why I would say, keep it at hundred.
Sound is based on physics, I don't care whether you have fifty foot or a hundred foot, at the end of the day, sound travels, and, and that change.
It, it's not the sound.
Well, that's, that was his complaint, that it was the child.
Yeah, but it, to me, it's not the sound, it's just the distance between, between those structures.
I hear you.
All right, so we'll keep it at a hundred, and if they want smaller, they can go to BZA. Yes.
Yeah, and, and we can do a little more research, too.
Yeah, if you could come back and give us some more insight.
All right, well, thank you for that, uh, spirited discussion.
It's, I guess, Robin, you get to put us back on track.
All right, so, um, aside from the setback against residential, uh, we have the commercial corridor setbacks as thirty-foot front, fifteen side, thirty-foot rear. Does that, does that track?
It does, it's good.
Uh, fifty-foot building height, uh, which is the same as our commercial building height currently. Twenty-five percent pervious surface requirement, uh, that's basically the same as what we have now. We're, we're flipping the proportions, where now we say seventy-five percent impervious, and we're switching it to twenty-five percent pervious, but it, it's the same thing. And that's really all I had to point out in the commercial corridor. Again, a lot of the design standards, parking, landscaping, lighting, we'll get into that later in Article twenty-one. All right, uh, so moving on to C two, uh, so this is Article thirteen, so if you'll, if you notice in your text, this is formatted very differently from all the other, uh, and this is because this is a holdover from our current, um, our current zoning code, and this is kinda, it's a, it's a different, it's just a, it's a different beast than some of the other districts that we're dealing with, and, and this is why. So, currently, like, uh, we have, we have an A one, uh, zone, we have a C one zone in our current code, that, uh, there are zero properties in Orange Township that are, that have that zoning, there's, there's none. And so, when we change our code, when we change all these districts, those ones that don't have any properties in them, we can just get rid of them, no problem. The problem is, there are, I think, like, seven properties in Orange Township that are zoned to C two, so we can't just wipe it off the board. And so, it has to remain in there at this point, uh, in some fashion. And so, we have a, a couple different options for how that would look moving forward. Interested in your feedback on, uh, what you think we should do. Uh, and I, I would say the, the C two is kind of, i- it's basically a neighborhood commercial zone, uh, it doesn't have some of the, uh, more intense, like, uh, auto-oriented uses that, um, uh, that, like, the, the commercial corridor would, it's more, uh, office, retail, restaurants, for the most part, neighborhood.
Be somewhere else under than Lewis Center?
There's a couple properties along twenty-three that are.
C two?
That are zoned C two.
That are still neighborhood commercial.
Yeah, and there are a couple properties in Lewis Center Village that are zoned C two.
I can see.
What are a couple, what are some of the names of those properties or?
Um, so, let me make sure I'm looking at it correctly, 'cause I don't wanna misquote. Orange, Orange Wick, yeah, not Orange Point, Orange Wick, uh, if you know some of the, so, south of where the Schottenstein properties are, uh, Orange Wick Drive, uh, where that intersects twenty-three, north of Olentangie Crossings, uh, a fair amount of those are zoned C two.
I, I mean, are they all kinda together, where?
Mostly, um, yeah, so it's the left there. Yeah, so, along twenty-three, it's basically those parcels that front twenty-three there.
Oh, yeah, also, like, across from, um, the Marine World.
Yeah, it's, it's like a, a therapy center or something, um.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the music school and counselor.
And I think, if I recall correctly, there's a couple in, that are, uh, south of twenty, south on twenty-three also, there's just two or three. So, it's just kind of random pockets of properties that are zoned C two.
So. What did you say, Robin, the goal is to eventually phase those out and let them merge into another?
Correct, so the, and there's a, there's a couple different ways that this could look, uh, just depending on, uh, what you all think, uh, and what makes sense moving forward. So, yeah, you can see in that, the properties outlined, they, they were in teal, but that, yeah, that, that little stretch surrounded in teal, those are zoned C two.
Okay. Two possibilities still to go.
So, there's, there's a couple things that we could do. And I'm realizing now that I, I mistyped something on, on my PowerPoint slide. So, we could, we can keep it, uh, we can keep a zone called C two, uh, and revise the standards to make it something that we want. It should say, under that, it should say merge with CC, not merge with C two, it is C two. But merge with the commercial corridor that, uh, we just talked about. Or, we could keep it as it is right now, make no changes. Then, after we finish this zoning code update, we could go back afterwards, rezone those properties to commercial corridor, and then delete the C two afterwards.
So, if you merge it with the commercial corridor, is it changing the zoning of the properties?
Possibly, and, uh, this is something we need to check with legal on exactly how to do this, but what I'm thinking is, we could basically just copy and paste the standards from commercial corridor into the C two. And so, they would have different titles, but they would be functionally the same.
How far away are the C two standards from the commercial corridor? Is there some vast differences in set, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm assuming is what you're talking about, is there, it just doesn't match because of some setbacks that are changed? What, what's, what's the big holdup from being able just to swap them out?
I think you're allowed.
What's the stumbling block?
Well, uh, you know, I think it's, it can be difficult, and, and not practically difficult, but, uh, you know, morally and politically difficult to rezone somebody's property without their consent. But, I mean, that being said, zoning changes all the time, uh, zoning is updated all the time.
There were usage limitations in C two, or there, that are not in CC.
Correct.
So, if, if those were rezoned to CC, and somebody wanted to sell one of those properties in that strip to say McDonald's, that would be allowed, which would probably not make their neighbors very happy.
So, that would be my concern, is that there were restrictions, I think, like you said, you couldn't put, like, a Quickie mart or a gas station on those neighborhood commercial properties. 'Cause I'm thinking of the ones along Lewis Center Road, um, 'cause there was one that we, a house that was actually rezoned to neighborhood commercial, I think.
Yeah, their, single family is a conditional use in the C two zoning, so.
So, it's not just a relabeling? It's, it's not just, hey, we've modernized our code, and now, now C two has become CC, it's not just a relabeling. Has to be, has to be, has to be redone. That, 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 that's the legal point you're making, you can't just, oh, here, the labels have changed.
Right, yeah.
That's more legal for you to investigate, because you don't want.
Yeah.
A suit back on the township for that.
No, 'cause I'm, I'm not concerned, the neighbors.
Yeah.
But there'd have to be restrictions, if, as long as no restriction, that's what I'm asking, what changed? The setbacks changed, or, uh, some restrictions changed, where they don't match up? That's what I'm trying to understand, is what's the real difference between C two and CC? What's the difference? If there's no difference, that just gets to be, I don't, I'm not legal, but that just gets to be a relabel.
Yes, there's, I would say there's quite a bit of difference, yeah.
Yeah, in terms of the uses, so actually, the, um, the front and, the front and rear setbacks would be the same, the side yard setback would decrease from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet.
No big deal, yeah.
I just think it's a use issue.
Yeah, the, the big, the big difference would be the uses.
Yeah, and that's what would have me concerned.
Is there anybody that, if, was already there in C two that would not be in compliance?
There are houses, right, aren't some of them houses?
Yeah, some of them are old houses, so some of those old C two buildings along twenty-three, and the ones on Lewis Center are old houses that have been converted to businesses.
Right, but they're.
And then, I, isn't there one, there's like, an apartment above the old Mercantile.
There, there is that, that, uh, was, got a conditional use.
I, I don't know, I mean, it could, I think it could just be a legally non-conforming use, you just can't do anything else with it, but. It would be a pretty good argument if they wanted to expand a BZA, hey, we had this, you know, but.
The ones in Lewis Center, I would think are not an issue, simply because that's the Lewis Center district.
Yeah, e- exactly, and, and so there's.
And so, that's, that's a hundred, that's a set of rules. The other ones along twenty-three, it, you know, it depends on one, either, if, any of those are out of compliance with the new CC standards, commercial recording standards.
Well, and, and so, there would be, there's basically a grandfathering, and so, anything that's existing, if we change the rules, they're allowed to still exist.
Yeah.
So, that, there is allowances for legally non-conforming.
You, you know better, so whenever you decide to make life.
Well, I don't make the decisions.
Well, I, you know, I, I, I wouldn't have a problem with whenever you make a decision for that C two. I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure we should keep it, but hey, if we have to, we have to. I'm not opposed to anything that is easier to make all this work.
But if there is a residential there, and they want to sell to another residential owner.
And that's Lewis Center, that's a whole other issue, there aren't any residentials on the twenty-three.
Well, there are, there, it's, I'm sorry, there, there. Well, there are, there, it's, I'm sorry, there, there is, there is a residential use within a C two district.
It's a business.
And then they have a couple of, couple of locks that keep it. Something else could happen. Yeah, that something else could happen there too. So I, I think you leave it as is, and, you know, if you wanna revise the standards or what have you, then you do that, but I wouldn't shake this apple cart on it.
Yeah.
Talk to legal and come back with a recommendation.
We'll put notes in, when the properties are sold, all those are gonna get converted to a commercial corridor. You know, what's, the C two's gonna disappear once, once they.
But you also think about the people who are behind there, who, you know, have accepted that this is the way life is, so to speak. This is one of the places where it's not that we're going to develop something, this is already our story, we already know what it is, we've experienced, now you change it to something else, and you come up with the McDonald's, now I'm really upset about the story, you know.
So something like, if we can get rid of it, how do we make sure that existing properties owners maintain their rights to the uses that are already there? Okay, well, yeah, I think we.
Would you have to give them advance notice to?
Somebody else may come in and change something else, too, right?
Yeah.
Would you have to give advance notice to, to the indiv, to the owners there in those lots, that this is happening?
If, um, i- if we're changing the district, then yes, if we're changing the standards, then no, not necessarily.
I would recommend, talk to legal, what are the best options, and then come back with a recommendation.
Yeah, that's in your court, Robin, that's what I think.
Yeah, 'cause it's also, what is gonna be easier for you to enforce and, uh,
to change, to.
Review and.
Because thi- this whole zoning code was about future.
Yeah.
Okay, you know, and, and this sounds like C two needs to be eliminated, you know, so, yeah, I think I'd work out ways to where future.
But it's not gonna be applied anywhere else, though, right?
No, it's gonna get applied.
Yeah, so if it's not gonna be applied anywhere else, I don't know.
Well, and, and that is the thing, if we leave it in, then property owners can request rezoning to that district.
Yeah. Yeah, could we call, like, our, can we call our commercial corridor C two and just update the standards here to be more encouraging to what we want in a commercial district? Did I say that again? Did I say that right? I don't even know what I said, okay. But, so, we have a commercial corridor, and then we have a C two district. Should we forget the commercial corridor, but put everything we want in the commercial corridor in the C two district, 'cause that already exists?
Possibly, but then you're, you know, you're functionally changing.
I, I think you talk to legal and see, because, see if you can get by with this by, hey, taking these C two properties and changing them to CC, and just changing, I speak to legal and see what, because that, that's gonna be where we go at the, at the end of the day.
Well, so we, we can rezone them, but we, we just, we can't do it as part of this zoning amendment that we're doing now, we would have to do it separately.
I agree, you can't, you can't leave it, just like you can't make Louis Center a district for somebody. Not zoned in the standard.
Yeah. Okay, I think, I think attorneys.
We want any more neighborhood commercial per se, I think we want it in a.
You would eliminate it.
Okay.
So the question is, what's the best way to eliminate it?
Yeah.
Making sure that, um, the prop, the current neighborhood commercial property owners still have their rights, and that the neighbors around them don't all of a sudden get, you know, a gas station or a Quickie mart where there used to be like mom, pa's insurance agency.
And, I, 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 yeah, I, I don't really care about that unless that homeowner wants to buy that property, then, hey, if, if this is legal to be in that property.
You wouldn't want that next to your home, right? When that argument you made earlier.
But if, but if it's legal to the code, if it's legal, I mean, if it's not legal, then make it not legal.
Well, it's not.
But if it's legal, the, with the, what the neighbor's concerned, if all this meets the code, I don't really care unless they own the property.
The point being is it meets the code right now for neighborhood commercial, but if we do away with neighborhood commercial, we've just changed the code, and it might not.
Right.
Yeah, now the neighbor's upset, and the neighbor may not wanna buy the property.
Then, then, then you, then you create all kinds of issues that you don't need to create. You wanna make this a commercial corridor, period. And, and so whatever's, and if you make these properties commercial corridor, then whatever's legal for our commercial corridor is legal.
To me, it's not a lot of, it's not a lot of properties, and, to the best of our ability, to leave it as it is.
Yeah, I mean, I think Robin's last option may just make sense, like, we can, as a separate process, we can notify those ten properties and see, hey, we wanna change the zone, or, you know.
Or if we could have a survey, or just know what those ten properties are.
Yeah.
'Cause it, you know, the ones along twenty-three, I'm not worried about. The ones along Louis Center Road, I know some of them are in the village, but I'm thinking there's also, um, old ranch houses or whatever that might also be zoned commercial along there, or neighborhood commercial, that are outside the village.
Yeah.
Well, we'll check with legal either way.
Yes. We have, I think it is commercial. Maybe I'll just relabel it.
Yeah. Okay.
Are there more of these?
It's only seven.
Like, C two kind of.
So thi- this is the only one that we're, that, there's just a few properties in that.
There was another one in the last code, right, but there is officially no properties in it.
Right, yeah.
I can't remember what it's called. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we technically have an, uh, we have an A one, we have an R two, and R three, but there are no properties with that zoning.
Okay.
So actually, so the ones, the properties, I'm just looking at our zoning map now, so the properties that were zoned C two, that I, that I mentioned that were farther south on twenty-three, those, uh, were very recently annexed into Columbus, so we don't have to worry about those anymore.
Oh, okay.
So now we're down the.
Which, which properties were?
The near Speedway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, on twenty-three, like Nissan, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I figured that, yeah.
Okay.
I didn't think you were gonna keep that.
Yeah.
Whatever happened to the, I'm sorry, I don't know, did they have the meeting on the, the Spencer thing?
Uh, that's on the twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Yeah, mark calendars.
Grab your popcorn.
Okay.
Okay, uh, so flex employment, um, so this is, uh, this is the industrial zone. Again, not a ton to talk about, if, if it looks pretty close to the commercial corridor, that's because it is in terms of the setbacks that we propose. Thirty-foot front setback, fifteen-foot side, thirty-foot rear. It says fifty against residential properties, but we could increase that to one hundred. Fifty-foot building height, twenty-five percent previous surface.
Knowing what, um, the new industrial uses are coming, uh, from, uh, from the industrial side, on jobs and hire side, the newer ones want higher ceilings. So i- when you have fifty foot, the inside is typically limited to thirty-two, thirty-four. Max that you can actually have for your, uh, any, uh, equipment. Is it possible to increase that? Because, um, this is anyway, it's a flex employment industrial zone. I would recommend at least having an internal, uh, height to go up to forty, because that is what we are seeing as a more common request by companies, especially in the flex, flex industrial.
So you're saying, so the, the current is, is fifty?
Can we increase that by eight to ten feet?
So.
But that is industrial, this is industrial, right?
Right. Possibly, uh, so.
Because that is the most common request we are seeing right now, and if a current employer wants to leave, and, uh, if you want to attract a similar kind of employer, uh, to not lose jobs, then.
I think part of it depends, too, on our fire department, uh, because they have to have the, the trucks and the ladder capacity to get up that high.
The ladder capacity would be a concern, although technically, they're supposed to be able to go up to five, six stories.
Are you seeing that building type change in Columbus, or just everywhere?
So, industrial buildings. We, we at Jobs Ohio, we see the requests for, uh, companies that are coming out from either FDI or, uh, local companies, coming for, we, we attract companies to the state. And, uh, what we are seeing as a most common request is a forty-foot clear height inside the building, to be able to, um, move the equipment with cranes.
So what would be the ideal height situation?
The internal height forty, so you need to have at least ten feet, uh, ten.
Like sixty feet?
Sixty foot.
Okay.
Right now it's fifty, so.
Right now it is fifteen.
Eight to ten. So, that's what I'm trying to figure out, so how far are you spanning structural to get the trusses you need to get in there?
Yeah, exactly. So, right now, typically, when you have a fifty-foot, uh, building, the internal clear height is typically thirty-two, thirty-two or thirty-four, somewhere in that range. So, now that we are seeing a common request to be forty, because they want to move, some of these equipment needs to move using cranes internally.
So when you say common, for every ten folks that come in, how many would you say?
I would say, it used to be almost, uh, it used to be maybe one or two, now it is probably five or six or, among the ten, are requesting higher clear height. Just a, just a.
I, I can, I can tell you from, from experience, sitting here for twenty years, Orange Township Delaware County is not ready for that. They would all oppose it.
But this is the future.
I, I know, I know, but I'm, but I'm telling you, it's been very difficult to even get fifty-foot buildings. Notice, Orange Township, we're thirty thousand people, and no hotels. Imagine that, imagine that, you know why? It's because of building height, you know, for to get, to, to, to change the attitudes to say, oh, we want ten more feet, when we wouldn't build hotels?
I don't understand.
It's our attitude.
I would say would, would.
It's our attitude right now, right?
I would almost all be willing to say tha- that, well, hey, if we're not, I'd rather build hotels than this, and thus reject this, you know? Uh, I hear what you're saying, I don't disagree, or, you know, I'm sure you're correct, but attitudes all over Delaware County with Orange Township would have to change.
Well, this would only be in the industrial zone, correct?
Yeah.
So where is the industrial zone?
It's ri- right across the railroad tracks.
I'm assuming it's like the railroad tracks.
Yeah, green, green meadows.
Green Meadows Drive.
And there's no other building everywhere close to that height.
So, my question is, I can understand if it was right next to a airport, air, airstrip, to have that restriction fifty, but, uh, for industrial, what other reason would there be to not allow? Is there, is there a reason?
I, I can't think, I, I can't think of a reason. I was been here on this zoning commission, pushing for hotels for years, and I can't get there. You know, so I, I, I've been pushing for that maximum limit of, of least fifty foot for small hotels, and, you know, I'm, I can see the attitude throughout, and it's like, okay, it just hasn't been able to get done, you know?
But maybe it's also the bus, the hotel industry is like, it's not enough for us, right, in height size, right?
No, you can build hotels within heights.
You can build hotels fifty foot, it's be three stories, it's difficult to get the fourth one in.
Yeah.
But you could easily get three stories, the question is, you know.
Who?
Who, I mean, your standard, a lot of your, are three or four stories, if you're talking about like your Marriott Courtyard, or your Hampton Inn, or whatever they're like.
They would not build anything less than four, because, uh, they know that, they need a concierge level, so.
I thought the hotel was the one that was like the, was it the day or something, hour or day, the hotels that we would try to bring here, or.
But if we're talking about industrial buildings against railroad tracks, who cares if they're a hundred feet tall? They're not gonna bother anybody.
I'm just telling you the, what, you know, the, the, what, what the attitudes have been through Delaware County and Orange Township.
Well, and how this, how this zone would work, they could apply anywhere. It's not just, you know, it's not in a target area.
Say that again?
They can apply for this district anywhere, it's not targeted into a.
So, I have.
Can we ask, like?
But it would be a rezoning.
Yeah, I mean, they would come here, right? But if they apply, you know, that's, if the standard is sixty feet, and they come in with a sixty-foot building, then that's gonna be a hard.
So if the fire department is okay with a sixty-foot building, maybe to compensate, you'd wanna consider increasing the setbacks a little bit. You know, so that the profile of the surrounding buildings, you know, it's not this, you know, towering shadow or something. But, I mean, from a practical standpoint, I don't know that sixty feet, as long as the fire equipment can handle it, you know, i- is really any kind of terrible aesthetic problem for an industrial zone.
Yeah, so just for some reference, the, our, you can see on our zoning map there, industrial is the purple.
So it could be any of those going to sixty foot.
Well, I could, I mean, they could apply anywhere, I mean, if they have to go through a zoning change, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
You know, what, what is our primary, is it the historical challenges, our issue with, with increasing height anyhow? Or, I mean, why is it just locked at fifty foot? And why isn't it just sixty foot all the way around?
It's, I'd say height and density are the biggest challenges here. Just the.
Yeah, and, you know, obviously, historical and existing context is important. Uh, you know, you are the zoning commission for Orange Township. Uh, if you feel strongly that things should change, then you are well within your rights to make those recommendations.
The future is coming here, I mean, Columbus is coming this way, folks are gonna start building around us, you know, look like this, that old place, people move out, folks will stop coming in, they're coming in now.
Are we, I don't, I don't even know if this is a thing, but could we require it to be a conditional use if it, if the building exceeds fifty feet? That way it goes through a public hearing process?
I mean, they could always request a variance, uh, I think it would be a, that would be a variance rather than a conditional use.
They could, but what, but what's happened so far is those get rejected just out of hand, so we don't even get to that point.
Is it because we're rejected, or you think the board is rejecting?
Well, I'm, 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 I'm gonna give you another, I'll go back to my original example of those three multifamily things that got turned down that were near fifty foot, when Delaware Regional Planning didn't like them, our zoning department didn't like them, for the height they were and the size they were versus.
That's because they were across from basically thirty-five foot tall buildings.
But, but, but they met all the codes, they met everything, but again, it was that height and size which, which everybody was, was opposed to. So, and I still think that's going to be the case, depending on where you wanna put these, put these buildings. It, it's always gonna, that's, that's gonna be an issue.
And typically, what I'm going to say is, uh, typically, this is going to be a developer requesting, not, most of these industrial users lease, they don't, they don't want to have a capital, capital building on their books. They typically lease, and the, the request, if it, if it is ever made, it would be by a spec builder, who would be building sixty foot, and obviously, not knowing the use, we, uh, it'll always get rejected if they come here, and if it is a variance, and that's why I would say.
And even if it comes to with the use, and they break cap, you gotta.
Yeah, and that is exactly what I'm saying, we should probably do sixty feet, considering, um, uh, where the market right now is, and where the growth is for the future. If you're, if you're re- if you're rewriting the zoning code, for those industrial areas that are next to railroad, railroad tracks, and commercial next to it, right? Not, not, there is no residential there.
Yeah.
On, on one side, there is railroad tracks, the other side is commercial. So, I don't see an issue there, but, again, unless it is not a safety issue, it should be.
Yeah, and so, and, and part of that was, uh, why I wanted to bring up the, the zoning map, is that, you know, we have seen a number of rezonings, uh, where it's been commercial next to residential. We, uh, and, we have not really seen industrial next to residential. And, you know, having the flex employment zone, you know, any property anywhere in the township could in theory, request rezoning to that district, but that is where our comprehensive plan comes into place that, you know, would not support that.
Of course, yeah.
So that is something to take into, into consideration, that, you know, if there is a sixty-foot height limit, that zone may make the most sense.
It does, uh that's though to the residential, right on the other side of those tracks.
Mm-hmm.
You have residential that goes right to the tracks.
They would be looking at a tall building out there, back in their home.
Mm-hmm.
With respect to a sixty foot flex employment, are, is land in Orange Township low cost enough for those kind of businesses to even wanna be up here?
Sure. You got some of the most educated folks up here.
I mean, right, I, I, I have no idea.
Those are gonna get.
I have no idea what that business generates, but it would have to generate a tremendous amount to be profitable to buy land up here.
So it's not land, that is what I'm saying. So for, for example, if you see the businesses out there, it is Toyota. Toyota has a, has a building there, uh where they assemble small, uh small things, uh but their lift truck components are assembled there. You have ATS Ohio right there. It's an automation provider for battery packs. Okay? Uh so those are companies that.
Don't really care about the, the prices, that what you're about to say.
Yeah, it, it's not about the price, but for them, the most important thing is the labor, uh or workforce.
Yeah.
Educated workforce who have, who are in uh uh Lewis Center Township, or, Orange Township here. And One Industries is one of the most uh recognized automation providers for, for building. For, they build data centers and they are here primarily only because they want to attract that workforce. And for them, they are, they are the ones that have to, they pre-build a lot of data center stuff inside. Currently, they told me, they want, they have to move, move it out, they, they break, they break, after they build it inside, they break it apart, take it to a, to a place and then rebuild it because their buildings are not tall enough. Because they can't accommodate cranes inside. One is one of the, uh big employer that they have about hundred and twenty employees there working.
So ATS is at fifty feet. Um I, I would say, so my experience with this recently, we do have, uh, we have one data center that they have an approved zoning permit with us. They haven't started construction yet. Uh I went back and forth with them for about a month on the height of their building, uh and because the height limit was fifty feet and they.
What height did they want?
Their first, their, well, I don't recall exactly, but it was, I think their, their first draft was like fifty-six, fifty-eight feet and, you know, I, I, I told them, no, you need to revise downward and so we kind of, they found some creative solutions to make it work at fifty feet, but it was about a month of back and forth.
And that is a most common request we are seeing.
Does Jobs Ohio have any like resources to like educate us? I mean, I'd love to pass this along to even the trustees if this is the direction we're going. Cause I mean, height is such a big problem here.
Sure.
Um I didn't know if Jobs Ohio, yeah, if, you know, this is what we have, there's a demand here. They wanna come here, but this is the problem. I don't know. If that, that would be really helpful for, well, probably us to see too.
Oh, absolutely.
I think so.
Yeah, I'd love to, love to get some insight.
And the other thing is, if we do sixty feet just in this, I guess, flex employment industrial zone, it looks like it doesn't necessarily have to be a warehouse. It can be another commercial use, but just.
In those.
In those areas. So you could have a sixty foot tall hotel.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dennis, I was gonna bring that, and then you'd get your four stories.
I, I think that, that's a big miss for Orange Township, to be honest with you.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree.
Yeah, and I, I've seen a lot of hotels that are bordered on three sides by industrial. You know, uh even a place I was at fairly recently, uh there was a big uh trucking repair depot, you know, for the, 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 the cabs on the tractor trailers. Uh that was right, right next to the hotel and everybody's fine with it.
Yeah, well, hotels are always fine. If you go to airport, airport hotels are surrounded by.
Oh, yeah.
Industrial, right? So it, it is very common for hotels to have, be surrounded by uh big industrial, so.
And I don't know how relevant this is to this discussion, but data centers, kind of a hot topic on mine. Um, a lot of places get sold on data centers. Oh, we're gonna get all these great high paying jobs. The modern data centers have a skeleton crew of maybe three or four people.
They don't need people.
They're automated.
Right.
You know, uh there's no employment there other than the construction jobs to build them. After that, they're gone. So you're not looking at, oh, look at all these payroll tax dollars that are gonna be coming into the township. There won't be any. And those guys that are working there, those three or four guys, they are not particularly highly paid people.
I, I have to disagree. I have to disagree. We, we incentivized a lot of data centers. Originally, we thought the same. What ends up happening is the construction inside the data center is a constant job because they have to keep up the server racks and they have to update them every two years to be able to keep up with the demand. And what ends up happening is these server racks have to be updated every two years and there is, it's a capital job.
They haul them in on trucks, wheel them into the place, wheel them out and they're gone.
It's not that easy.
Well, I, I mean.
Anyways, yeah, I'm not here to.
I guess the question is, is it, is it people in the community that is, if, if it's a one-time thing, hey, we gotta replace every two years, that's a group of people coming in from elsewhere to replace it potentially, but anyhow.
What is the process or thoughts or how do we?
We could do it, you know, something like if you're gonna exceed fifty feet, we, we, or maybe grant additional ten if you do like the landscaping, I don't know, just something that.
But increase the setback. Like we're talking about the residential folks that are on, just on the other side of the railroad tracks. If we're gonna take, you know, ten feet of sky away from them, if that's a little further away from them, it kinda evens out. I mean, I don't know how the math works out, but there's gotta be a formula for that.
For the visual.
Yeah.
Typically.
It's not so much the, the, the visual of this big looming building, you know, casting a dark shadow on the backyards of people or whatever.
I, I know architects know this, but for airports, it is one is to seven, right? Uh if you go seven feet high, you have to go one feet further away.
I mean, and it's, there are also, there are cities that have zoning codes where you have to step back as well. Um so you can get like the light through and all that other stuff. It was, when I lived in Atlanta, they had that. Um to make sure that neighbors still got light. Um but I like Michelle's idea of doing it as if you're not comfortable with sixty, do it as fifty and then give them a bonus of sixty feet if they do, you know, additional setbacks or with landscaping.
It's a, at least one, some way to move in that direction. I mean, if we, if we are getting more and more of these type of requests, there's a chance we might be coming back here and be like, hey, we can't even get any industrial use, these type uses are not able to come to the township because of this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or hotels can't come into the township because of this.
I, I don't think I've, have we gotten a hotel interest?
No, we actually had some and we're still talking about that property.
Yeah, yeah, but, but it's been a long time.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was, it was a property that we're still talking about, that frontage on, from Home Road.
On Twi- Twi- Twi-.
The whole, that whole property was already going to be a, a multifamily with some hotels with uh, uh, I think it was, I forget what company was gonna move in, build all the thing behind it. And that all got turned down and it all blew up. It all went away. EPCOM came in and saved this and bought the, bought the property for the homes and the frontage we're still talking about.
I would say I, I have been here for three years now. I have received.
Before your time.
Zero phone calls on hotels.
Yeah, I don't even know the last.
I, I, I remember having to go through two hotels.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we increase the height and you guys go out and find some hotels, invite them in.
Yeah.
The economic development team, say, hey, that's what we got going on.
So there were, there were two hotels that I've seen come through.
What were the brands? Do you recall the brands?
Um, I don't recall the brands, cause it was like a developer.
It didn't get that far.
Yeah.
They, they, they got, they got turned down out of hand to where it never got where they were actually come in and presented anything. It was, it was rejected before it got there.
Well, the one that I remember reading about was one that was like a day.
Yeah.
Or hour or something like that.
It was the, um.
The garages. There was the adult hotel retreat.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one actually did.
I'm sorry.
I, well, we'll discuss that after the meeting, okay?
I actually was part of that and looked into that and called folks in Toledo, cause they have one, cause I wanted to know about that. Cause that was going to come up and I wanted to have some basic understanding of what was going on with all that. So yeah, I, I could, but that's not what this discussion is about, so let's move on to where we're at.
Exactly. So mixed uses.
Yeah.
So, so will we revisit the, uh, the height story uh, uh in the near future before we?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm, I'm not hearing a ton of consensus, but we will, we'll do some research and, and come back.
Well, on the surface immediately, I mean, it's, I think it's something I could lean towards.
Yeah, I, I think there, there could be ways to, um, you know, not just set it at sixty foot, but have some kind of uh, you know, additional requirements that would come into play, so we can, we can look into that.
To sweeten the pot type thing. Incentivize.
Yeah.
So yeah, I'm good with sixty. If that's the wave of the future and it's in just what's right now currently zoned industrial or you would have to rezone to industrial to allow that height.
No.
And then we would have to then go back to the comprehensive land use plan and that.
Well, I'm sorry, Christine, this wouldn't apply to any existing industrial zones because they're all within their own plan districts. They have their own height standards that they would need to change the zone.
Okay.
But hopefully, knowing that they are already in a planned industrial, if they wanna apply to this.
It's easy, they can do that. And then any new ones would then be either in the, you're already in the industrial zone, no big deal. You're in a residential zone, that goes against our comprehensive.
The only time this would apply is if someone chooses to rezone the property to get this height, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
I'm saying that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just so many layers.
Okay, we've got two more uh zones to get through, uh so we'll move on to Article eighteen, which is the mixed use. Again, not a ton to talk about here. Uh it's designed for a, you know, a, a mix, a true mix of residential and low impact commercial use. Uh one thing that's on my running list, we've had, um, you know, I, we had in our overlay district, we had a number of properties or a number of uh potential pitches for developments that wanted to use the mixed use zone really as for just apartments. Uh and I think the, the direction that we've gotten the staff is that, you know, if it's mixed use, it needs to be an, an actual mix of uses and, and have some commercial in there and then it's a little more palatable. So looking at the language, I think we need some additional language in there to make sure that it actually includes mix of uses. I think we have some language that we can pull from our current overlay that requires, you know, a certain percentage of the gross, gross floor area to be dedicated to commercial use. So we may copy and paste that in there. Uh, looking at the setbacks, they are pretty small, so it's ten foot setbacks all around. Uh those, I, I'm thinking we may just mirror the commercial to thirty, fifteen, thirty. Uh and then this also has the fifty foot, we're abutting other residential. Uh again, I think we'll bump that up to a hundred feet. I, I don't think we really settled on something earlier, so interested to know your thoughts going back to this uh increased setback against residential. Do we think that mixed use needs a larger setback when abutting other residential?
Yes.
Mixed use.
Mixed use. Well, it depends on what the mixed use is. What do you do if there's a residential component to your mixed use?
It also comes under like apartment, right? It's not residential, purely residential, right?
It can be.
So.
You could have retail with it. Think of like Evans Farm.
Evans Farm, yeah.
Yeah, where you would have apartments above, um or, I mean, I do mixed use multifamily as an architect and generally, yes, we try to have a commercial use. Usually commercial spaces on the first floor or parking combination thereof. And then above is usually um residential units. Um you could also have them be um office use maybe, but uh ever since COVID, there's not really a market for offices, let's be honest.
It's coming back.
It's coming back. I know slowly, but if anything, what's been happening is we've been taking office buildings and turning them into mixed use or apartment complexes.
Yeah, the ground floor is, can be a laundromat or, or something like that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, or, you know.
Ice cream shop.
Uh ice cream shop, restaurant. Uh one of them has like a bank in it. Um, a bank, yeah. Uh some of them, one, at one time they had a pet store. Um, I'm trying to think, but stuff like that.
Yeah. Services for the, for the residents.
Yeah, services for the residents or the community. So it's just like, you know, oh, I'm gonna go to the bank, get money out of the bank machine, go to the restaurant.
Daycare?
Um, so with daycares, it's difficult uh because of the egress purposes of, and all the openings you need for each of the little, I don't wanna call it classrooms, but daycare has its own. If you ever look at a daycare, there's always each of those little classrooms or rooms that they have, always has two points of egress.
Well, this isn't just for mixed use buildings. It's just to have a mult, like, well, you can have a daycare next beside apartments, right?
Exactly.
And so that's, that's where it gets difficult both to administrate and then to enforce. Uh and this is where I'm talking about having some language uh in our overlay, because what our language in our overlay says that, you know, each, the mix of uses doesn't necessarily have to be in the same building, although we do like it when it is that. Uh but uh if there, you know, a development has to have a true mix of uses that are interconnected via pedestrian walkways, uh things like that, and a certain amount of gross floor area has to be dedicated to commercial, otherwise it's just apartments in a mixed use zone.
Yeah. And you also make sure there is a um connectivity.
Right, yeah.
Um so you're not, you know, you're, you're not walking a mile uh through a busy parking lot to get from your apartment to the daycare or to the restaurant or something like that, but that it needs to be a walkable community.
Well, we currently have the, uh, the area that's mixed use where we've got the Meyer and the Home Depot and
Cheswick.
Yes, Cheswick Village. And they got Cheswick Village in there because the whole area was zoned to be mixed use. And so they, they could do that. But it wasn't exactly the sort of mixed use that anybody really had in mind. You know, you're over, under commercial residential kind of thing. But that's what the code allowed and so we didn't really have any way of, of saying no.
BJ's with the apartments behind there was considered mixed use.
Well, considered by some to be mixed.
So in, in this, I think we ought to find some language to prevent that kind of abuse of, of, of that zoning.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to be somehow interconnected.
Yeah. Agreed.
So yeah, if you could tighten the language, that would be great. So why I'm looking at the maximum building height as sixty feet for mixed use? And when we were having so much issues of changing the light industrial flex area to sixty.
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't.
I just wanted to shake you up a little bit.
Because I actually, I actually put in my PowerPoint that the max height was fifty.
I added sixty just now.
No, I, I, I'm just kidding. I'm not naming any, you know, I don't mean to put anybody out, but I'm just like, we just had this discussion.
I was thinking it. I was processing.
Yeah, I mean, you can go sixty feet with a mixed use. Um that would be four stories. And a lot of, because if you're, if you're looking at traditional mixed use, which is all one building, you would have to have a podium or separation to turn it into two different buildings, so you could have residential on top of commercial. From a code, building code perspective, not that y'all, but then you would want the extra three stories.
And the, um, so the, the mixed use buildings, the true mixed use buildings that are in Orange Township currently, which are the Evans Farm buildings, those are, they are a fifty foot height limit, but, uh, the, um, like the elevator shafts and some of the appurtenances do go above that fifty foot height limit, so they, they stretch that definition a little bit, but they.
So what is, what is our question that we're?
Is this the current zoning?
No.
We don't have a mixed use.
Currently.
Yeah, so Evans Farms is mixed use.
So Evans Farms was very complicated, it is a planned, single family district and then a planned commercial district. And within the planned commercial district, there was a divergence to allow housing. Very, I would, like, I wish we, I wish we did it this way, it would have been a lot easier, but we didn't have this district, so.
Agreed. Now, in this case, can, um, same building, let's say, same building or connected buildings, one side be a hotel, four floors, other side be residential apartment complex, we see that all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
In other places.
Becoming more of a trick.
Is that considered?
I think that counts as mixed use.
That's not a mixed use.
Yeah, because it would be commercial and residential, multifamily residential, but yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yes, overnight lodging, hotel or motel is a permitted use in the mixed use district, so, yes. Uh, have, so I just, I don't, we don't need to open the whole discussion again, but quick temperature check on a sixty foot height limit for mixed use.
Yeah, I would be okay with it, I might wanna put in the same caveat of if you go up to sixty foot, you might have to have greater setbacks, buffers, landscaping, whatever that we asked for. I agree, that way you're not.
I, I think that's all future use, I mean, future use when we have, uh, I, I don't even, I don't even see it in what's currently in Orange Township of the property left available. I don't even see how it's doable, but yeah, you can put it there for a future, I don't mind that, but I don't see how it's doable today.
Well, maybe.
Well, it would be nice to have it when we did Evans Farm.
That's fine, I, cause, cause we already saw that it wasn't doable at forty-five feet for three buildings that got rejected by regional planning just a, a month ago, two months ago. We, we already saw this get rejected at thirty-five feet because there isn't anything else around that, it's that size, so it looked out of place and odd. Sixty feet, you know, was doubling what the, what those zones were, it never would have flown. So I, I just don't see anything available right now for that to work, but future, I disagree with future.
Yeah.
Future, putting in for the future, when, once all, once Orange Township gets leveled and we redo it again.
That's a spare.
Places got a business all the time.
Well, I actually do think at a certain point, um, where we have like the Meyer or the Walmart or those large sprawling areas, I mean, they're not gonna.
They're not gonna last forever.
Is not gonna last forever. They're gonna have problems leasing that out, and then that's gonna be torn down or redeveloped.
Yeah, we lost the Giant Eagle.
Yeah, right now look at the Giant Eagle.
Yeah, look at the Giant Eagle.
Yeah, I mean, the.
But there's also no saying that, you know, ten years from now, somebody less, less Wexner or somebody would come in, buy up a neighborhood, flatten it and rezone it and do something like this.
So.
So it's great to have it available as a tool.
Quick question, can Evans Farms, rest of the area that is not built, uh, request for, um, uh, change to mixed use?
They could, they could, they'd have to rezone, correct?
Yes.
Cause right now they're a planned unit.
Because they have some property west of.
Yeah.
They have a lot of property.
They have a lot of property west of.
Connecting to the.
So that's why, they, they can easily pass that, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they notice this, then they're okay, six feet, reasonable.
Well, who are the neighbors come out of that?
Yeah, you will see a lot of neighbors come out on that one.
But they, a lot of neighbors came out for Evans Farm in the first place.
Yeah, they, yep. We saw them.
Okay, anything else on mixed use, the red, the density is eight units per acre, which is the same as the, uh, community living, the multifamily zone?
Eight units per acre as in, e- even if they are apartments?
Yes.
That's what we discussed last meeting for the multifamily.
I was not on that one, so.
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, do we get requests that are higher, yes. But is it double of what our code offers currently, also yes, so.
All right, anything else we wanna talk about on mixed use? All right, on to the neighborhood zone, Article nineteen. So this would be our primary straight, uh, residential district, so, uh, single family neighborhood. Setbacks are, well, de- development standards are fairly straightforward here, so density of three units per acre for single family. Uh, setbacks that we're proposing are twenty-five front, ten side, uh, thirty to the rear, uh, and then ten feet for accessory structures. And we're talking a lot about height tonight, so I'm interested, in this discussion, uh, maximum height was proposed at forty feet.
Why?
Yeah.
So. It depends on who you ask, uh, so there are certain neighborhoods in Orange Township where the height is calculated differently. Uh, and that is to allow for slightly taller buildings, uh, Evans Farm is one of those.
Can you elaborate, like, how is it, how is it calculated differently?
So, our current code and the draft code says that we calculate building height to the tallest point of the building. There is another way of calculating building height, uh, with, and Evans Farm is one of these, where if the building, if the roof of the building is sloped, you, the, you take the height at the average.
Which is what like City of Columbus does.
Yeah.
And other jurisdictions do that, they take the average, um.
So our, our compromise was to maybe, and i- if the commission feels otherwise, we can stick at thirty-five. Uh, the compromise because it's difficult for us as staff to calculate that average grade. It's easier just to have one point where you measure, um, to, instead of calculating in a different way, to just raise it a few feet to allow for slightly taller houses, but if the commission doesn't like that, we can change it.
Enforcement is a.
Looks like we're raising heights or around here. So, you know, I, I'm not challenged by it.
So, this neighborhood zone, this is basically single family residential.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, then I would say stick at thirty-five, cause thirty-five pretty much is the standard for a two-story.
Yep.
If you're looking at getting a three-story homes, which generally is not single family, then you would go forty.
Yeah.
But if you're just your standard typical two-story with a basement, thirty-five is average.
Uh, yeah.
And I mean, and part of mo- most of your attic space is not usable with that.
Right.
It's all trusses, nobody's actually going up in there except maybe storing Christmas ornaments or something like that. It's not, um, inhabitable space, if you want an inhabitable third story, then yes, you could go up to forty, which maybe that's what they did at Evans Farm.
Yeah, and I, I think, given recent conversations, you know, I think at the beginning of this process, I was open to that forty-foot height, but the, the more that we've gotten into this, I, I do think thirty-five makes sense, it does allow for consistency. There can be, you know, plan districts that allow for otherwise if that is a strong desire on the part of the builder.
Just a quick question.
Refresh again, why did you say forty initially? What was your thought behind that?
Well, so it, like in Evans Farm and, and, uh, there's one or two other plan districts in the township that just, they calculate building height at a different, in a different way to allow for a slightly taller building.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't really wanna get into calculating building height that way because it's, it's too difficult for us as staff to, to keep track of, uh, generally speaking, so the, the compromise was to, all right, we will calculate it the same way, which is the very tallest point, but we'll raise that tallest point to give you a few more feet to work with.
So what I was gonna show is, is City of Columbus does their maximum building height for the average of your roof. So usually if you're like a hip to building or something like that, they'll do half. Other jurisdictions, they do it at the peak, which is easier to look at in an elevation, cause that's usually what you measure to, to the peak. Which is like the high point of the roof. And then I believe our code still will have, uh, exceptions for like chimneys or cupolas or steeples or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, that, that, those are exceptions.
Those are exceptions, or if you have like, I don't know, like I say, a cupola, a tower, uh, for like a church, um, or chimneys, cause your chimneys have to go above your roof plane if it actually is a real wood burning chimney. Per code, you can't be right on your roof because of the fire risk.
So.
Sorry, put away my protect hat for a moment.
That helps, actually.
That gives some insight.
Yeah.
Um, but, I guess my question is, so you said thirty-five is, is the standard?
Is usually standard, yes. Because single family residential homes are generally, you know, two stories max.
You, you wanna keep this to two stories.
Yeah.
You know, you don't want people building three-story homes because then it can get to be, uh, a bed and breakfast or something else, commercial use, so you wanna keep the heights so that it limits it to two stories. And you don't have to have somebody come in here and lie to you that that's what, and they're, it's residential, but they're really using it for this.
Mm-hmm, or they are having like a rental, they're having.
Exactly, rental, running out rooms. So yeah, leave it thirty-five, can so, cause that, that limits, limits its use, that's what windows should be for.
Ca- can it still accommodate, uh, um, I've seen Evans Farms, if you tour some of the open houses, you can see they're eleven feet, the first floor, and or nine feet, the second floor.
You would just have to lower the slope of your roof then. So, you know, instead of having like a twelve-twelve, which is very steep, you know, one foot by one foot, you could do like a six-twelve. And therefore you'd be half as tall. Oh, your roof, sorry, would be half as tall.
Okay.
So you would have to change the slope on your roof.
If you, if you have the eleven and.
Exactly, and it also depends upon how large your footprint is, so how you're spanning, you know, your, your building.
Exactly.
Whether or not you have like an interior bearing wall, um, that would help support, and then you can reduce your truss sizes. So I mean, it depends, a lot of residentials, they might only have like fourteen inch, twelve inch trusses.
Because I have seen some of the houses in, on, on the Evans Farms Drive, they have like, what, eleven and a half feet, first floor and eleven feet, second floor. And that's probably why they.
Generally, your standard stud sizes, you would have nine foot ceilings.
Yeah.
If you go, you might be able to get ten foot with your standard su- stud sizes that are pre-manufactured, but after that, you're getting custom.
Yes.
Um, and it's not generally affordable, most builders are gonna go the standard nine, you know, used to be. Used to be eight, but now you can go nine.
Yes.
You know, and maybe ten, but you want the pre-cut studs for your floor to ceiling height. And then depending on how you're spanning, you know, you could do sixteen, multifamily, a lot of times we do eighteen, twenty-four. But that's multifamily, that's, you know, like a big apartment complex, you don't need, um, that depth when it comes to a standard residential.
Got it.
Um, sorry.
It's okay.
So I just wanted to slide in and talk about the accessory dwelling, the accessory structures. You know, garden shed, tool shed, that sort of thing. Uh, I know I've got one that's right up at the very edge of my rear property line. No setback at all, in fact, technically, it's three inches over the property line, but that's a whole other thing. Uh, or at least it's three inches into the easement for the utilities, anyway. I don't see the harm. And it would, I didn't build it, it was there when I moved in.
But, um, I think it's, if it's under a hundred square feet, it doesn't apply, right?
Right.
Yeah, so if a hundred, a hun- under a hundred square feet, there would be no setback standard.
Okay, so this would be more for your like accessory dwelling unit, not like a garden shed.
An additional garage or.
Okay, that's what you said, so additional garage you would have.
Yeah, but like a little shed, we didn't, that wouldn't apply. And then I think, just piggyback what Mark's saying, so like the setbacks that we looked at, I, I believe we, we kinda looked at what we've been allowing over the last handful of years as far as, um, for single family, um, districts. So this seems to be more of a common setback request for a lot of the applications we've received. Obviously density, we increase that for an additional unit, but.
The size setbacks got reduced.
I think everything did.
Yeah.
I have a follow-up question on that tool shed garage thing. A motorcycle can fit within that square footage that we're talking about, it can fit within like forty square feet easily, even thirty square feet, is that considered a garage or then at that point?
Well, uh, would it have a driveway?
No.
If it was going to grass?
If you're just for winter.
Yeah.
Storing in a shed.
No, cause then, I, I mean, basically from my mind, the motorcycle versus a bicycle, it's about the same.
Yeah.
Little wider, granted, and with gasoline, but size-wise, you know, I could see people getting a storage shed and putting their bicycles or, you know, their riding mower, their lawnmower, whatever in there. Um, I would have an issue if it had a driveway, but.
Yeah, it's just the driveway would help with the square footage, like, restriction, but.
You know, technically, if it, if you have your storage shed, it could be your, I don't know, man cave, she shed, whatever. If you can fit it in there.
Got it.
And that, well, I know most sub, most single families are, have a sub, or, or with an HOA, I think a lot of that would be controlled too.
Sometimes the HOA doesn't allow the shed.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, like mine, we are not allowed to have shed.
So it depends on your, your particular HOA.
Yeah. Your community is. And then it gets difficult when you have a child's playhouse.
Yes.
Child's playsets are exempt from zoning restrictions, to clarify.
Thank you, thank you, and that a child's playhouse is a play structure.
Really awesome catio. Now, my neighborhood side setbacks, I think, are fifteen feet.
Yeah, your subdivision, or, sorry, your neighborhood is one of the smallest ones. Like, one of the older, smaller ones, but, um, not for side, but I think the rear is pretty.
Yeah.
I think our rear is still thirty feet, I live in a, the same place.
Thirty?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's, it's, it's all over the, yeah.
Yeah.
Fifteen, it's all over the place, the smallest we've seen is six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For, for a side setback?
Yes.
Yeah, we allow six in a couple neighborhoods.
Yeah, and so that, you know, we, we tried to look at a lot of the existing neighborhoods that we have, but there's just so much variance. There, there's just a wide range of what the setbacks are for all of them, so this is a little on the small side, but somewhere in the middle, uh, for the most part. Some, some subdivisions do have different setbacks for, um, for accessory structures, some don't. Um, where it's, you know, a thirty or thirty-five foot rear setback and, and that's it. Some do allow for sheds or other structures to go into the rear setback, i- it's just a, it's a mix, so I, you know, I, this is maybe a little smaller than the average, but none of these setbacks are out of line from things that have been approved over the, over the past.
How about twelve feet?
Twelve feet is our, twelve and a half is our, like, general one, right?
Yes.
Okay, in our current code.
So why, why, why are we shrinking it? So why, why, why are we shrinking it? Has there been a big demand for?
Oh, yes.
There has, there has, judging by, you know,
Yeah.
Um, zoning cases that have become before us, it seems like everybody wants to shrink the single-family setbacks.
The builders.
Yes, exactly, the developers.
I wanna stick.
Not the owners, but the developers, yes.
There's people to be honest, maximize the
That's your line, right?
Space, yes.
So we'll try with those, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Move, change the height to thirty-five. Density, we did add an additional unit, so their current code says two dwelling units per acre. I'm not sure any developer is willing to do that anymore, so. So we'll try three?
All right, anything else we wanna talk about on neighborhood zone?
So you oh, three dwellings, you're, okay. Whereas, I saw, I thought there was eight units per
No, that's for multifamily.
Multifamily, yeah, that's, got it. Thirty-five percent, okay.
All right, well then, we'll wrap up with Article twenty, which currently is the RCOD, and it's suggested that we are removing it, so that's an easy one.
That's the Route twenty-three.
Yes.
Overlay.
Did you want it to try to do the minutes, or?
Yeah, so I I think we'll we'll leave it there for, uh, the the code discussion, and we'll pick back up, uh, next time on the, uh, general development standards in Article twenty-one, but that is all the districts that we've gotten through. So we're up to Article twenty, we've made it through a good chunk of the document, so thank you for that, we'll take feedback and craft the next version of the draft and come back to you eventually, but we'll continue to move forward. Get into all the nitty-gritty of landscaping, parking, lighting, all those fun things next. Uh, so for the other items on the agenda, uh, we have two sets of meeting minutes, I apologize, I did not send these out in advance. Uh, you do have them in front of you, if you are comfortable moving forward and approving them tonight, then great. Uh, if you would prefer to take your time and review them, then we can, uh, move those to the next meeting's agenda.
How does everyone feel about approving the minutes?
Yeah, I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, then can I have a motion, uh, to review the zoning commission on meeting minutes, uh, from the meeting held on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and from the meeting held on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So.
Second.
Uh, Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Bobanul?
Yes.
All right, and then so the only other order of business will be to, uh, choose a date to continue the hearing for the uh, zoning code rewrite discussion. I would be available, uh, next Tuesday, the eighth, but it sounded like maybe a few of you would not be. Uh, so I think the next available date would be Tuesday, the twenty-second, uh, if that works for the commission.
That should be fine.
Yeah, I think that's
Dennis, twenty-second? Don't rub it in. I'm sorry, all right, so, uh, can I have a motion, uh, to continue, um, the Orange Township Zoning Commission discussion of the, um, zoning code rewrite?
So moved.
To, I was gonna give
Twenty-second.
To April twenty-second at six-thirty A.M. in the Township Hall.
I will not be here at six-thirty.
I second it.
Ms. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yeah.
Mr. Bellis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Bobanul?
Yes.
Motion carries.
You're retired, you could be here, Dennis.